Recording in progress. Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission at 6:30 and we'll try to begin on time. We have a, this will be an interesting meeting because it's been the first time in a while that we haven't had an actual application to review or discuss on the agenda. And I know that, you know, we often think, oh, this is a great time to like take a break or whatnot, but it's really a moment for us, I think, to get a lot of other work done in the meeting. And you can see, we still have an agenda with quite a few items on it. So our first order of business is any announcements that anyone might have. Does anyone have?
Welcome, Amy.
Well, I'm going to do that. You have to ask?
Yeah, I'll just say that the Old Town and Waste Pond Meadows project is going to the pre-construction meeting in two weeks, so it's going to be starting soon. And I know you guys are integral to that approval.
Great, thank you. Now, you'll notice a new face at the table, and we're welcoming Amy Morasko, and we're overjoyed to have our commission, all of the seats occupied now. It certainly makes it easier in terms of ensuring we always have a forum. And we should have online both Tom and Jackie, and I don't know whether we've seen them yet online.
Yes.
We have Jackie.
Okay, I think Tom is coming. Oh, there's Jackie, yes, thank you. And I assume Tom will be joining shortly.
Yes, he was coming in.
Your eyesight is better than mine, like in that very small tile.
He emailed me saying he was coming in.
But first, I'd like to introduce Amy. I'm overjoyed to have her joining because she just brings a depth of experience that I think we'll all benefit from. She has been visiting Lewis for many, many years and then became, as many of us have, full-time resident. For the past, she, where she lived previously in the town of Hillsborough, Virginia, she served as vice mayor and at that point helped them go through, it's a very small town, but helped them go through a major kind of set of projects and renovation of that town, bringing in over thirty-six million in grant funds. So she's got a lot of experience, and it was, all of this was done to work on the infrastructure. So she knows what we're talking about when we talk about stormwater management, roads, et cetera. Now, she also has a master's in environmental planning and is the founder of the Nature Generation, a nonprofit that inspires children and young adults to be environmental stewards. And this is actually a nonprofit that has worked with the Lewis Library as well as Salisbury University in terms of giving out awards for an environmental green book award that honors authors who are writing about environmental stewardship. But finally, and Deborah, your ears should perk up with this, she is also a master gardener and a tree steward. So you may not know that we have a tree committee on the works, for other books right now. So please join me in welcoming Amy.
Welcome, Amy.
We'll move on to unfinished business. At our last meeting, we talked about what subcommittees we might mount, and one of those is the environmental subcommittee. And the idea is to have this focused specifically on environmental regulations, and if you look to page three of the packet for the meeting, Janelle has kindly given us a more detailed list. We discussed having this focus specifically on the regulations. And I say this because we'd like these subcommittees to really be, to have a sense of what their agenda should be and what the scope should be of what they're looking at. And when we talk about an issue like the environment, I mean, it can be like from here to greater than this room in terms of the issues we might look at. But the idea is that this committee would begin by focusing on the current regulations and what needs to be updated, changed, or reviewed in those. But it won't be limited to that in that there are other topics. And if I think of what we did on the subdivision code, we began with looking at the regulations. But when we hit something like lighting, we really went outside just what the narrow regulation currently had been because we knew that there'd been so many changes in terms of technology and in terms of concern about light pollution, that we looked much more broadly. But the idea is to really focus on the things that are actually within our control or in our domain. So those are all listed on page three and would include things like woodland protection, pervious material, sea level rise, et cetera. Now, is Tom on right now? I was hoping that Tom-
Yeah, Tom is here.
Okay. Tom, I hope you can hear me because I'm about to use your name in vain, okay? I'm hoping that Tom will chair this committee and that we'll have several volunteers to join the committee, and certainly Amy, I think you would be an excellent person on that committee. But I am looking for more participation, so Melanie, Jackie, any other interest? Melanie's on board, great. Bob? I think that's a committee of four, and I think that's a good size, so.
You know, I would certainly be interested in, depending on the timeline, I'm going to be working on the tree stuff for quite some time, but, you know, I do have interest in that committee. Those topics are near and dear to my heart.
And certainly the hope is to have these committees reporting back to us fairly frequently so that everyone on the LPC has a chance to stay abreast of the discussion as well as mayor and city council, and that we get into a rhythm of the committee working along for a while, then reporting to the LPC, and then participating at one of the mayor and city council workshops and doing a brief presentation there. So that isn't a matter of spending, you know, a month or a year, and then suddenly the whole thing comes forward to everyone, so.
And I just want to clarify, but there can be a little fluidity in the makeup of these subcommittees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I would then maybe, you know, be more inclined to offer my service to the committee like after the first of the year or something like that.
That's fine. And I really want to try to follow the model that Melanie followed with the annexation, where you were doing frequent updates to mayor and city council, because I think that's been helpful. Okay, so we have a committee formed. Do we need to vote on this? I don't think so, do we?
You probably should, if you're forming, if you're actually forming a committee, you probably should vote in it just so it's clear in the minutes that it was established as an actual committee.
Do I hear a motion to form a committee? Jackie?
I have a question. Did we confirm that we have a chair for the committee?
Tom?
I would like to nominate Tom Jensen, too.
Tom, can you-
Especially if he's not listening, he's got it. You're it, Tom.
If you're not listening, Tom, you're for sure. Tom, could you raise your hand, or can we see you online to wave to us and say-
I did just see him a minute ago.
No, I think he's having connection issues, so he'll be back with us in just a minute. There he is.
Put him on some more committees.
Tom, are you back with us? There he is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Tom, are you willing to serve as chair of this committee?
I've been listening to my character being, you know, trashed here for a year. Yes, I'm happy to, coming to you live from Sacramento, California. Greetings, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, great. So do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to start an environmental subcommittee with Tom Jensen as the chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no objections, we now have a subcommittee on the environment chaired by Tom, and the initial members will include Amy Morasko, Melanie Moser, and Bob Pheffernan with Deborah after January arriving. Thank you. Okay, the next two items on the agenda concern a draft, possible draft recommendations to take to mayor and city council. And one thing that I've seen as we've, as I've served on the LPC is that various times we review a proposal or an application, and there are things we'd like to do, but we feel a little bit handcuffed by the current code. And one of the things when I became chair was, I resolved was that when we hit one of those bumps or oddities, that we actually at the next meeting see if there are ways we can make a correction for it. So there are two draft statements here, and we'll cover first a recommendation, a possible recommendation to mayor and city council regarding an ordinance to require archaeological review for new developments. It appears to me that often when we're discussing a new development and we talk about an archaeological review, there's a little bit of debate as to when we can make that recommendation, how we make it, et cetera. And I think it's worthwhile to have the code be clear on this in terms of what we might do. So if you look at page seven of the agenda, I'm happy to read this. Has everyone read it? And it's up online for anyone who's dialed in. I'm not sure, are you able to read it, Barbara?
No.
Yeah, okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. So the only question I had, first, is there any input or discussion of this?
Well, I think that it's a start, but it's sort of like, what if there's a finding? Then what? You know, do we protect something under this language? Do we go further in protecting it, or, you know, do we just accept that it's going to be demolished?
That's, I mean, I think that's a question for you guys.
I can only add from my experiences that this person that does the archaeological review is a professional, so they're going to make recommendations as to what needs to be done within their report. And that report will come back to the planning commission, and I think the developer should be held to the recommendations of that report.
And so we have said this would be, it would have to be done prior to final approval.
So it would not come back to us then?
So, no, but it would go to mayor and council.
And ultimately, is the jurisdiction on this shipa, or are we all right, you know, like do they determine, there are guidelines on what they're going to, what, you know, their protocols are?
I mean, personally-
Depending on what is found, correct?
Correct. Depending on what is found, the state has guidelines as to how to handle the material or whatever is found. And then if it meets a certain criteria, then they would, they would go through the shipa's office for whatever is determined to be necessary for protocol. Sometimes you might just find a little bit of evidence here and there, and then the archaeologist will determine, you know, is it just because people have been passing through, or was it clearly a settlement that, you know, you should do something more? And, you know, then they'll, or sometimes they'll find a graveyard that nobody knew about, and then it's like, okay, you're redesigning your site to protect that, and I, you know, so that will happen.
There are legal guidelines, I understand, around human, if human remains are found, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so the State Historic Preservation Office has certain things that they're required to do by statute depending on what's found. But while their determinations are binding on the developer, you can impose additional conditions. If there's, if for some reason you think that it needs to be protected in a different way or a more restrictive way, as always, you always have the power to impose conditions that you think satisfy a health, safety, or welfare concern. So I think that the response is going to be, you know, measured based upon what the finding is.
I mean, I would personally like to see this say not just that it would be completed by a professional archaeologist, et cetera, but that it also includes some language that would say that in our recommendation or conditions, we could state something in terms of the scope of the review, et cetera, that would give a little bit more flexibility to the LPC in terms of the recommendations that makes the city council.
Clarification. So why wouldn't it come back to the planning commission?
Can you move your mic?
Oh, sorry. Why wouldn't it come back to the planning commission and then to the mayor? The way it's written right now, so let's say they find something, and obviously there's state rules, so you find a cemetery, you find an underground storage tank, you have to take, we have regulations on those. But you could have a situation where land was in open space on the property, and then they find something else like this, and it really changes the site plan. And in that case, I would want the planning commission to have its view again before council, because I would think council would also want us to take another look. The way it's written now, it's either or.
So there's another section in the subdivision code that if it's a significant change, it comes back. So we made sure of that. So typically, like if they find something, like there's a graveyard in the middle of the site, and they had something proposed on that, and it's like, okay, well, you're coming back through the process because you're more or less, it's a significant change. So there is something in the subdivision land development code than when that was recently adopted that addressed the significant changes in the process that it would go back through.
Jackie, you have your hand up.
Jackie?
Yeah, thanks. I have first a preliminary question and then a second question or suggestion that actually addresses what was just requested or discussed with our newest council member. One, why is this coming to us, or perhaps I should say, what is the position of the city council on this? This is a change in code. I would expect city council to have its process to consider changes to code and not us. That's my first question. And then my second question is if this is the appropriate process with respect to what was just suggested, I would cross-reference that other section or include that language because I think two sections in different places can get overlooked.
In terms of the process, our role is to make recommendations. So just as we have with the annexation code and with the subdivision code, this would be a recommendation we would send to mayor and city council. And so we are not about to pass or vote on a change in code. What we vote on is making a recommendation to mayor and city council that they consider this language.
I understand that. I guess I'm just wondering, do we have guidance or input from the city council on this before we go through this process?
Normally, let's say, the normal process has been, at times, mayor and city council may ask us to review something and to work on something, and we do it then. At other times, in our everyday work, we've identified an issue that we're going to take forward to them.
And this is that, the latter?
The latter, yes.
That's correct. Yeah, because I'm not aware of any discussion, Jackie, that the council has had about this particular subject matter.
No, but it's come up in-
This is something that's being driven by this body here.
And it's come up in recent-
Yes.
...reviews, and so I think Nancy is sort of saying, maybe we ought to include something in a more formal fashion so that we have a guideline going forward.
Yeah, I would add to that, that I concur with what Bob's saying, that it's just that we've been knee-driven a lot of times, that we've found ourselves in corners unable to fully, you know, make a decision because we don't have all of the information that we would, we would like. So therefore, you know, in these subcommittees, it's kind of, we start at the bottom and do the research, then we put together preliminary reports, share that with mayor and council. I'm about to do that next week with the tree ordinance subcommittee, and then move forward after we get early feedback. And I, I know that's the procedure that Nancy, that Melanie followed with the annexation and that Nancy would like to follow for all of the upcoming subcommittees. So, you know, but I think this is a need-based ask, request.
So maybe what we do is, if we don't do something tonight, is we put it off till next, next month, but, and maybe some tweaking or rewriting or, as Melanie suggested, a third point of what happens then after the survey is done. And some of us will have time to get a little smarter than-
And I think what we'd like to do tonight, though, is to get input on are there areas that Janelle should be researching or looking at, and so that when we meet again next week, we have amended draft language, so.
Okay, well, go ahead, Joe.
Joe?
I would like to see some type of limits set on the need of a survey, depending on the size of the development. I mean, if it's a four-unit corner or something like this as opposed to a 50 or 60 house unit.
And I should say, this isn't something that says there'd be a survey on every property.
Yes, yeah.
This is something that-
Yeah, we have to define it, yes.
LPC would make a recommendation in the situations where they thought there should be one. I just wanted to clarify.
And perhaps maybe going to precedent for what are appropriate grounds to request archaeological surveys. You know, easy things, I will use an out-of-the-city example, but the groom property, there was a long history of everything going back to indigenous peoples living on that parcel. So it was, it was, it made a lot of sense to seek additional archaeological data there. But, you know, I don't know what other, Janelle, I'm going to lean on you on this, what other scenarios?
So what I've seen in the past is if you know, trying to think, if you know there's a graveyard on the property, usually you'll, you'll ask because sometimes graveyards and cemeteries are not set boundaries.
Yes.
Typically, because again, I worked on a project and they got through approvals and they started moving dirt and came up an unmarked cemetery, unmarked graves, so they had to redesign their site. But they had already done some work because they'd already identified another area location. So typically, they know, they'll look at history, the state has great archives, and I know a lot of people will use those because that's how you found, we've found, developers and applicants have found information. Typically, it's based on what you know of the property, you know, old area photographs, old history books, that kind of, old archaeological studies that have been done. Because not, well, every, not every place, well, Lewis is historic, and, but not every place had, is most likely, is likely to have archaeological findings on the site. So there is some, there's some need that needs to be there.
It seems to me that at Roosevelt Landing, that it was the public who actually came up to, wrote letters to the commission and said, by the way, there's, you know, there might have been a fort here and, or part of the fort, and, and, you know, alerted us to the fact that there, there might be something here. So the one at Tower Hill came up because it went through the class review, and so I think the state historic office probably got a chance to look at it, but, but here, that doesn't happen very often, so.
Right, and with the Tower Hill situation, they knew there was a cemetery on the property. So, because they knew the, they knew the family history of that site.
There was a huge book published on it, yeah.
There's a huge history to that property. And then sometimes, again, we will get information from members of the public that will give us leads, which is why, you know, it's, you know, if the planning commission or mayor and council, because they're both going to see it, determine that it's necessary, you can require a study be done.
It seems to me that there are two ways to safeguard. The first way is what we're talking about, which is either Janelle or others, because they know the property and they know the history, or the public. So that's the safeguard that comes in, and as Bob said, maybe we work on some criteria. The other one is the engineer discovers, I've been in those situations, where nobody knew anything, and then of course, on-site in the field. So there are two ways to protect. One is because we know about it historically, or a citizen or community knows about it. And the other one is actual in the field. So there are two ways it comes back to protect. But I think it sounds like just criteria so that we can be sensible about when we're requesting it, and when no one knows about it and it happens, then how it comes back again. Because if it comes back with new information, we have another action to take. So in all cases, I think we're safeguarding, which is really the intent, right? Is to safeguard something of cultural value or environmental value.
And to Joe's point, it's not to throw another roadblock and harass a developer or homeowner or something like that.
Well, I think, are there, is there any other input that we can give? Because I think as we begin this process where we try to address issues that keep coming up, it's not, the intention isn't in one meeting to change the code, okay? It's to begin that discussion, to start with some draft language so that we can really look at it and research and think this more. So I think we need to bring this up at our next meeting and carry it over. And I think it would be worthwhile, Janelle, to have some revisions to this text, some other options. And we have a, would you like to speak? Please come forward. And if you, if you could just, for the record, identify yourself and your address.
Hi, Barbara Curtis, 17 Ship Carpenter Square. I think it's a great idea. I am curious, though, about the definition of professional archaeologists. You know, I've done a little bit of research, and that whole field is a little bit loosey-goosey in terms of registration, certification, whatever. There is something in the federal government, OPM something or other, which defines the qualifications for an archaeologist, and that might be worth having a look at.
Interesting point, because one thing we looked at with, when we were looking at the Roosevelt Landing, was this whole issue of what qualifies as an archaeologist. And correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, Janelle, but my understanding is in the state of Delaware, the governing board, basically you can join it. So it's, there isn't, there isn't a set of, you know, you have some licensing boards in states for different professions, and then you have other boards that are more membership-based. And this is not a licensing situation, but a membership situation. So it is a concern.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So does that mean to say that I could join that board even though I have no archaeology degree?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of frightening, I think, then, that we probably need to, if we're going down this route, put a minimum requirement in there. Thank you, Barbara. A minimum requirement in there for-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess it's having more detail. I mean, you would never be considered a professional archaeologist even though you joined that board, Deborah.
Sorry, Deborah.
Sorry.
I like my own hat.
They want your membership, yeah.
That's the jerk of your archaeology capabilities, Deborah.
Yeah, one thing to consider on Roosevelt Landing is the fact I've gone through the photos on our website showing the existing buildings, the amount of foundation work done there, and underground plumbing, the site has been very well disturbed. And right next to it, in the cemetery, is a location where people dig six feet down on top of the old fort. I mean, and nobody does surveys there. So there could be artifacts, but who knows? But, you know, it's not a virgin landscape we're dealing with there.
Any other comments?
Let's see, one, I think to Amy's point, and it's been a while since I looked it up, but we have a section in our engineering specifications for when something- but we have a section in our engineering specifications for when something is discovered in the field, what the process is. I know when we put the sewer in from Lewis to Rehoboth thirty years ago, we ran into a lot of things, certain areas. And when we did, we halted the project and the archaeologists came in and dug it all out. But we actually had something in writing of what the process was. I'll try to dig that out for the committees.
That, that would be great. Well, I think we've opened this topic up, and we'll continue on at our next meeting. And I think we've had a good discussion here on this. The next item is, if you recall, when we were looking at Roosevelt Landing, the zone open space was able to be applied to the requirement of open space within the development. And our code permitted this, and we needed to follow it with the code. But we had several discussions about whether, whether the overall intent or belief in terms of setting a requirement within a, a new development, that there be a certain percentage of open space, whether we had, anyone had really considered the fact that zoned open space might be used to meet that requirement. The idea being that when you add more houses and you have more people, you want to ensure there's some open space for them. And if you're just using the open space that's already there, in a sense, you're, you're kind of taking away from, or are adding to the, the burden on that open space. So this is a, I asked Janelle to, to provide some language on what might be an amendment to the code that would take care of this issue. And this is one that basically says that the, that when the open space areas shall not comprise less than twenty percent of the gross area of a major subdivision or applicable site development, excluding lands zoned OS or open space. So this is a fairly simple one, but I still want to make sure we have a, a, a robust discussion on it before we consider whether we want to send this to mayor and city council. Any thoughts?
I think it's, it's perfect, I think.
Does it conflict with anything that's been written into the recent changes?
No, and this is using the, the percentage for the, for the, for the, the new changes. So it's, we've worked from the recently adopted to make the, the change.
And it uses the same definitions of open space about available and...
Yes. Usable, et cetera.
Usable.
I, oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I'd just like to see the word existing zoned open space, or already zoned, indicate that it's, it's there already, it's not something new, but it is existing in place.
Other, Deborah?
Yeah, actually, that makes sense to what Joe just suggested. I think that this is very simple, totally addresses it. You know, unfortunately, needs for, this is a very good example of where a need for a change comes directly from an unusual application. And I don't know how often we're going to encounter this, but when it comes up like that, we all learn a lesson, and it should have been in here to begin with.
I, I have no idea whether we ever encounter it again, but...
But we may.
We may.
We may.
And I see Jackie and Rich both have their hands up, and Jackie? And then we'll go to Rich.
Thanks, thanks, council chair. I don't, can, can I get the specific site in the code? This is, I just didn't have the time to dig through my code to find the specific section. So reviewing language in a vacuum outside of the entire scope of the code makes me inherently uncomfortable.
Yeah, Janelle, Janelle is looking it up right now, and will give you the, the... Sorry, I thought I had included it. You know, I, I thought I would be able to just rhyme it off, having worked on that thing so many times.
I know.
But I think that's a good discipline. Is that Jackie?
Jackie.
So what Jackie just said is, anytime we're making a proposal to council, is that in our, in our proposal, thank you, we would also list the codes that it relates or speaks to. The other thing, I just wanted just clarity on, because I don't know on the code, when you look at...
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry. When, when you look at open space, when you're setting up a criteria, you also want to be very clear that it does not include, in this case, already existing open space, as you said, but also that it doesn't include easements and streets, okay? That it's very specific, so that a developer doesn't say, "Well, I'm putting in a cul-de-sac and that counts." That is public space, but it, it is not open space. So sometimes I think code has to specify, a lot of cities specify that to exclude that from the code.
And that, that's actually one of the things that, when we revised the subdivision code, we spent a lot of time on, because there was a concern that water retention pools were considered open space, but they weren't really something people could play in, or, you know, children couldn't enjoy. Rich?
No, actually, that, that, that comment captured some of what I was gonna say. You know, there is just, there's an impact on permeable surface that, that I think is very important, given, you know, given the situation that we're in with, with sea level rise and, and with storm surge and, and extreme weather events. And this does, this is one small component of that. First of all, I apologize, I'm, I'm actually not in darkness, I look like I'm on a Halloween snack.[988.62][988.62](Laughter). But, but I wasn't at the beginning, I was having technical difficulties, but, and I do have to run it in a short while. But no, I just think this is, this is just good government amendment here, and I support it wholeheartedly, and glad that we caught it. And I agree with Deborah's, this should have been, you know, this is the kind of an example of thing that we should bake in from the start. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just glad that we caught this one, and, and we should look for this in, in the future as we go forward as well.
And, and to add to that, we really spent a lot of time on open space in the subcommittee. And it, you know, drilled it, and you thought of every possible scenario, except for this scenario.
And, and, yeah, the first observation.
We really did, we were...
So it's, it's section 170 dash 26E 2A. If you picked up your new copies, if you haven't, I forgot to bring them, but they are at City Hall. So the new cop, paper copies that you can put into your book are at City Hall of the new subdivision regs. So it is chapter 170, section 26E 2A.
And I think it's an excellent suggestion that when we're putting these in the agenda to, to list the actual portion of the code.
I got it for one and missed it on the other.
Okay.
I do try. I'll make a note of that, make sure I do that.
Now, I'm sensing that people may want to digest this, and we certainly can put this off to our next meeting.
I personally am very comfortable with it, and I'm comfortable making a motion. I don't know if anyone... Okay, I make a motion that we accept...
Recommend, the city council.
I recommend.
The city council.
That, I, I make a motion that we, that we make the recommendation to city council to accept this ordinance as it is written, with the addition of the word existing.
Is there a second?
I'll second, second.
Joe? Any discussion?
Um, I still can't find this section, and I'm in my book, and I picked up my new copy. So just for the record, I'm not going to vote on anything other than with a no, unless I can see the code section in front of me and know what we're suggesting that we're changing. I, I need to see the whole thing in front of me before I can make a proposed change to it.
Could you repeat the section, or the, can you give the page number, too?
I don't have the page number, I'm online.
Glenn, are you seeing it?
I'm seeing it, but I'm just also looking at the online code. So it's, so it's section 170 dash 26, large letter E, two...
Large letter.
Large letter E.
Large letter.
Two.
Large, large letter E makes a difference, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Large letter E, 2A.
And it's number 2A, just...
Right.
Obviously wouldn't go backwards in the alphabet, but...
I do have the new one, do you wanna? I have it in hard copy, would that be helpful?
You can find the page number.
Right.
Yeah, well, pass it on, yeah.
I have too many devices up and running for me to be able to look it up on code and keep you at...
Are you looking at the hard copy, Jackie?
It is...
I found it, it's on page six, 170 dot 64.
Exactly.
For anybody looking at...
Do you want to leave it open?
Yes, go ahead, keep it if you need it right now.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, I'm leaving it open to the page in case.
And this would appear under standards, because if everyone would recall, we, at the, at the front of each section, cover intent, standards, and then guidelines.
I also have to say, I, forgive me, I don't, I don't mean to be the, the naysayer here. But has this commission dealt with this issue in the same way that it had to deal with it in the Roosevelt Landing property? I guess my concern is, are we making a proposed change to code based on a review of one, one proposal? What is the history, how often has this happened, et cetera?
To, to my knowledge, this has never come up before. But I have not lived here for a hundred years, okay? And, but we did, we did a major rewrite of the, of the subdivision code. And in that, as Deborah's mentioned, we spent a lot of time on open space. And certainly in our discussions, as we did those revisions, the intention, it never occurred to us that, that zoned, that you, that you would have a parcel that included a zoned port, a portion that was zoned open space in with the rest of the parcel, and that it could be used in this way. It was, this was not applied, though, to Roosevelt Landing, because Roosevelt Landing came in under the old subdivision code. So we are talking about making a change to the newly adopted subdivision code, which will apply to any applications moving forward. And basically trying to make a correction to it to reflect the intention and discussion that, that we had around open space when we made those revisions.
Then I, I might have one question more for our, our legal counsel. My concern then would be, I realize you can change code and you can have that affect future applications, but at a minimum, we will be then treating developments differently. So some developments that have been able to use existing open space have a certain amount of open space, and so developments going forward will not be able to do that. So it's, it's being treated a little bit differently, is there, is there any legal concern with that, or are we okay with that?
There's, there's not an equal protection issue. You can, you can revise codes based upon things you learn through the regulatory process and through the approval process, which is what happened here. So I don't have a, I don't have an issue with a, any kind of equal protection type claim, which is what I think you'd be, you'd probably be getting at. I, I have a little bit of a concern that I haven't researched yet, that I probably, before it gets to city council, I would, which is, you know, there, there's regulatory takings, which is when you pass a regulation that basically prohibits somebody from using their property in any way. So a question would be, and it's, it's something I'll have to answer, is if you say to a, a landowner, "You can't use your open space for anything, even to count toward your open space in your development," is that a regulatory taking that is constitutionally impermissible? So that's a question I have to answer. But I, but I wouldn't make that prohibit your recommendation, it's something I'll just have to figure out before city council takes it up.
Yeah, because I, I just want to add that, working on the subdivision code, that the intent was to ensure that any new subdivision created new open space, that was new recreational space. And if you're already using existing recreational space to fulfill that requirement, it really is not the original intent of the code. And I think this is more of a correction than it is anything else. And a preventative correction, so that this topic can never come up again. Because it hasn't in the past, doesn't mean that it won't again. We have seen that we are in a time and place where, as land prices value, there's more blood to be gotten, to be taken from the stone. And we do need to be careful and set down, you know, set down policy that protects the lands and the people of Lewis.
I think there probably are some issues to look at, Glenn, because the new code also requires the open space meet some criteria in terms of usability.
Right.
And the zoned open space never had to meet those criteria.
Right, good point.
So, you know, that's another factor to consider.
Yeah, got it.
But the new code's been adopted.
Yes. So we do have a motion on the table, is there further discussion? Joe, you're, you look worried for whoever there.
Sorry.
I'm responding to, I'm responding to body language.
Well, is the question not, this is sort of new, should we give it a little bit of time, and Jackie and others get comfortable, or should we vote now?
Well, well, we do have, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, so we do have to vote. So, but in, in your vote, you can, you can use whatever you're thinking of to influence your vote. So let me first start with all in favor, and can I see a show of hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay? Opposed? One, two. Okay, so it's seven to two, the motion passes. Jackie, were you able to capture the votes?
Which Jackie, the other Jackie?
No, taking Jackie.
Dorie.
Yes, yes.
It's Dorie?
Jackie, yes, I, Nancy.
Dorie, yes, okay.
Jackie Dorie and Madam Chair, I was a nay, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, it was, it was Tom Dunson and Jackie who voted no, is that correct?
As, as well as Bob Heffernan.
Oh, I thought there were two no's.
So it, it was six to three, it was six to three. Sorry, I was incorrectly counting Tom, so thank you, Tom, for correcting that.
Okay, so Tom, Jackie, and Bob Heffernan were all no's, okay?
Yes, correct. Okay. That's why I raised the question, I wanted to make sure I was counting them correctly there.
Okay.
Okay, we're on to our...
Can I, can I just say for the record that before the vote was called, though, I, I would have been very comfortable just postponing this for, you know, until the next meeting to accommodate Jackie's concerns, which I thought were legitimate. I mean, just have more time to think about it, so, at any rate, for what it's worth.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, we're on to reports, and we're hoping to hear a lot from the tree subcommittee, because the tree subcommittee will be presenting to mayor and city council at the next workshop. And I know we all would like to have a, a preview of where the thinking has been going.
Okay. I am gonna lean on Janelle a little bit on this, as you know how much I've prepared, how much of a presentation should I, should I offer here?
So I think the subcommittee met last night, they have identified five topics that they're going to be presenting to mayor and council next week. The topics include the preservation of heritage and specimen trees, as remarkable trees on private property...
Well, I'm, I'm happy to go over, though.
Go for it.
I didn't mean that, I wanted you to present, but I mean, how in-depth should I get into this?
I think we all, for those of us who are not on this...
Don't, don't give everything away, though.
Okay, don't give everything away.
All bad, you know, keep some best of the truth.
All right, let's, let's, I'll say, okay, so I'm going, we're going...
You have to end in a cliffhanger, so everyone tunes in.
Well, the cliffhanger will be feedback from mayor and city council next week, or whenever they provide that. Well, the cliffhanger will be feedback from Mayor and City Council next week, or whenever they provide that. We've been meeting and assigning pretty diligent homework, homework. I'm going to be presenting with the support of, of the other subcommittee members. Lisa Morley will be there. Joe, Rich Ennis, Mary Linda Maddie, and Marty Thompson is also our tree commissioner here. Going to be presenting to Mayor and City Council at the workshop on the twenty-seventh. And to start off, you know, one of, we identified needs and the overview and need for a tree ordinance in Lewis. The obvious need is that we are seeing more redevelopment. We're seeing more expansion of existing properties that were smaller. And both of which of these are going to result in a loss of trees. Going back to memory notes, the last tree survey was done in two to three years ago. And the canopy then was identified as thirty-four point two percent, with a goal set for ten-year growth to thirty-eight percent. Here's what's tricky, is that in the, the last three years, Mariner's Retreat has been developed. There's been some forest clearing work on private lands at the Rollins properties. Site work has begun at Fisher's Cove. We have also annexed the Lewis Water Front Reserve and Donovan's Mobile Home. So are we still at thirty-four percent, or might we be down to a lower figure? I would dare speculate we might be down to a lower figure. So within ten years, we need to get to thirty-eight percent. And that prior was a goal of Parks and Rec. And our tree commissioner and Parks and Rec are working hard. But we would like to provide some additional legislation to protect trees using a multi-prong approach with an ordinance that identifies and preserves, number one, are, we're calling them remarkable trees. And I'll explain this a little bit more in a minute. Preserve other mature trees on private property. Increase public education regarding the value of planting trees and the correct planting and care. We'll be referring to that with right tree, right place. And we also need to, we'd like to create some protections for existing trees on construction sites, which is something that our research unearthed. And the last area would be to be looking at creating some minimum requirement of planting trees. And these goals would require a change in the zoning code. They might require creation of a position of a full-time or a part-time arborist, or consultants to do the needed fieldwork and oversee the new code. Other communities have a tree commission, but I know it's been kind of a long-voiced desire to not be so commission-driven in Lewis. So we want to offer up some, some different, you know, possibilities. And a fee system would be required to help fund the costs. There are also a lot of grants out there, which I'm excited to see that we have someone new on our. I smiled as soon as I heard that. Grants can be applied for, to assist in funding some of the components. One of the really special needs that was unearthed during this is we looked at a lot of different codes. We realized that during our research, other jurisdictions in our region have many, many more state and county protections for trees and buffers than Delaware and Sussex County do, which makes local ordinances less needed in other areas. I'll give a small example. I spoke to the city manager in length in Chestertown, Maryland. And he gave me a lot of education about the Maryland Protected Critical Areas, which I then went and researched. They've had these Protected Critical Areas since nineteen eighty-six. They are generally defined as all land and water areas within one thousand feet beyond the landward boundaries of tidal wetlands, the bay, and its tributaries. All development and land-disturbing activities within the critical areas are guided by specific provisions found in the state-adopted Critical Area Criteria and the local Critical Area Programs. Breaking into myself, they do give some local jurisdiction. You can say to someone, instead of just, "You can't remove trees," a local jurisdiction can decide, "Well, you know what? You can remove this many trees, but you're going to need to plant this many trees to replace those trees in another area." Let me jump back to the code. These provisions cover issues from clearing trees and removing vegetations to limiting areas of impervious surface. We clearly don't have anything like this in Delaware. This, this state legislation provides protection for trees, but other Maryland counties on Delmarva, such as Waukesha County, have created their own tree regulations. And Sussex County has not. So we found two major areas where we need a lot more protection, and/or the trees need a lot more protection. And many Maryland local jurisdictions have their own tree ordinances, ordinances that regulate private trees, as there is some local discretion allowed as long as the guiding principle is followed, that the Critical Area Law requires no net loss of forest or developed woodland cover in the critical area. That statement right there is huge. So we realized we could really only look toward Rehoboth Beach and Henlopen Acres as applicable coastal areas. Both of those areas regulate public and private trees. We believe that Lewis needs to develop a code, a code ordinance to protect our trees, too. So going through our process, we started what is covered. We have an unusual situation because we have already a street tree, public tree ordinance under our City Trees Code, chapter one seventy-seven. This covers park trees, street trees, and trees on public lands. It does not address any trees on private property or regulate the removal or planting of trees on private property. This subcommittee is not suggesting that we make any changes to chapter one seventy-seven. It's working. They're doing great work. Leave it. Then we moved on to examine a variety of tree ordinance from North Carolina to Mainland Maryland to New Jersey to Pennsylvania, to ordinances here on Delmarva. Most ordinances, most ordinances, especially when you're looking at big-city ordinances, Wilmington, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, they're only dealing with street trees and public trees. But as you whittle down to communities that demographically and aesthetically are more like ours, Joe can attest to this, you come in, you encounter some very, very stringent tree ordinances. And, you know, we, I, I think the general feeling within our committee was to find some sort of middle ground that residents could feel comfortable with. As we examined the other codes, we found many common elements, standards, and features that emerged. These included, include identifying trees to be protected by diameter or caliper size at a designated height. And that height is usually the DBH, which is designated breast height, height of the tree, which is.
That's the diameter.
Which is diameter of breast height, which is four and a half feet tall, is what we usually measure them. Also identifying heritage or specimen trees, setting tree planting requirements, often referred to as number per acre, permits required to move, remove trees, fees, forms for removal or replacement of trees, tree lists or resources, you know, developed for preferred or, and forbidden trees also. There's a lot of invasive and forbidden trees. Sometimes unfortunately, they're still being sold here in Delaware, even though they are on our forbidden tree lists from the state. And the state does have a lot of resources on that, on that topic that we can use. We don't need to reinvent the wheel on it. And also administration of tree ordinances by tree commissions or by highly qualified tree inspectors. So the tree ordinance subcommittee researched, has identified five specific areas. And I'm just going to go through them one by one. We're going to present them, these areas to the Mayor and City Council for consideration, feedback, guidance, and prioritization early in the process. And our goal is going to be to get initial feedback so that we can find a direction. We started with nine topics and whittled them down and combined some of them. So we felt pretty good landing on five. Actually landing on four and then realizing we had missed something very important. So here we are. So the first area is identification and protection of quote-unquote remarkable trees. These are the heritage and specimen trees of special importance in Lewis. We really like the idea of calling them remarkable trees because they are the trees that people talk about. And we'd like to start a remarkable trees designation and maintain a list of these important heritage and species trees. Want to create guidelines for this category and accept nominations of remarkable trees from the community. Some obvious examples are the bride and groom trees on King's Highway, the genko tree on the Verden property. But then there are many other lesser-known remarkable trees, such as a Japanese sephora and a large oak on Railroad Avenue, a southern magnolia and a tulip poplar on Monroe Avenue, and a black walnut on McFeast Street. There are many other trees out there, too, which could be considered remarkable trees. And we'd really like to see the people of Lewis get involved in identifying those trees because they're treasures for all of us. In addition to nominations, this is going to require a tree survey. And a tree survey is going to get complicated. We started with the very easy avenues, which are looking at something like doing a simple survey that we'll send out. And we would have voluntary participation, you know, a pick monkey with homeowners. This could also, we could, in two thousand and ten, Rehoboth Beach did a tree survey, and they subcontracted it to Davy Tree to fully assess their trees, and that is something that we could do. We would also, we could explore grant possibilities to get a tree survey either privately or through the Department of Agriculture and the Delaware Forestry Services Urban and Community Forestry Program. If it was legally feasible, and we do plan to ask the city solicitor about this, we could even consider the use of satellites or drones. Again, if it is legally compliant and not an invasion of privacy. So that's just a topic for discussion. The suggestion would be to enact heftier fines for removal of these remarkable trees. Unless, of course, trees are damaged or destroyed by natural disaster. We know trees die, and that, that is unfortunately something that does happen. Another area that we talked a lot about is incentives for homeowners to help them care for the remarkable trees that are on their property. It was also suggested that the city could consider a tree leasing program to take on the care of some of these remarkable trees in Lewis. But in yesterday's meeting, we, we agreed that more research and cost analysis is needed to continue or to make a recommendation for that at this time. But it is something we want to put out there. That's probably the most complicated. The next area is preserving existing trees on private property. And they would be identified by very specific criteria. We would have to develop the criteria for the trees that should be protected. Based on industry standards and other ordinances, we suggest measuring trees at the DBH, the diameter of breast height, four and a half feet, and regulating the removal of trees that are a certain, that are over a certain caliper measurement, likely in the six to twelve-inch range. But that would, is absolutely to be determined. That's just throwing out a point to consider. Again, a tree survey would be needed. And there are administrative considerations such as procedures, forms, and fees, and those would need to be developed. The next thing that we discussed, and we've discussed a lot, is education and outreach to support property owners and to help them select and sustain the right tree, right place. So we'd like to develop a brochure for homeowners focusing on the idea of choosing the right tree for the right place and give guidelines for planting, tree size, and watering. And we want to make that, you know, available, social media, internet, and paper. And since we even started this tree subcommittee, the Parks and Rec Department have developed a new, and with the tree commissioner, Marty Thompson, who's on this commission, on this subcommittee, I mean, they've started a tree website. So we'd like to, you know, promote that as well. We want to develop a recommended tree list with options for diversity and ornamental trees in addition to the already-promoted native trees. We hear about a lot, about native trees a lot. We talk about native trees and plants a lot. And we know the inherent value in them. But there also are other trees that add to the beauty of Lewis and can add to the diversity. So a comprehensive list either needs to be located as a preferred resource that we can share or developed. Again, this is a situation where there's a lot of really good resources out there. We may not need to develop this in-house. But regardless of that source, the principle of the right tree, right place should guide suggestions. I'm also hoping for an additional benefit that might go beyond the city of Lewis. If we start promoting this on social media, and a little more assertively out in the public eye, this could really help the many people who are moving here from other areas into larger developments outside the city of Lewis, landscaping their properties. They may not know that we're right now in Coastal Zone seven A, so trees that they planted in New Jersey are not appropriate here. And that some people say we should really be moving, looking towards Zone Eight, especially as we get closer to the coastline. Be looking at the trees that are planted maybe in coastal Virginia and North Carolina, if we want trees that are going to last a hundred years. So there's a lot of education that could help the greater community beyond just the city of Lewis. Number four is developing, develop a tree planting requirement for new construction applications or renovation applications that exceed the present dimensional footprint. And what I'd like to do, but I want to put out there first. We are not talking about requiring someone who's just, you know, sitting in their house not changing the footprint to require, to require, and requiring those homeowners to build trees. I mean, to plant trees. Who it would apply to is homeowners, if they applied for a building permit to tear down, you know, for new, to tear down new construction or replacement of a structure, or a permit for renovation that expands the present footprint of the principal structure. Like in Henlopen Acres, they even say if it expands it more than a percentage of the square feet, or, or was it four hundred square feet, four hundred or eight hundred square feet? We looked at so many of them that at that point, they were thrown into a different category. But we, you know, we want it to apply to new permits. And there are some specifics that need further exploration. As applications for accessory structures that add significant impervious surfacing may be considered, too. For example, when you build a large pool and you pave a, a large surface of your backyard, which is a practice that is, that happens today, you could be taking out a lot of trees and creating a lot of. and creating a lot of impervious services. So, that's something that needs to be explored if that also would open the door for you to be held to this new standard. So, what is the new standard? This is, again, a standard feature of most tree ordinances, and trees per acres, acre required and size of trees to be planted are typical. We suggest requiring one tree per 2,500 square feet of property. So, obviously, two trees per 5,000, three, et cetera. That'd fit really well because it would address our smallest lots in the city of Lewis, which are just over 3,000 square feet. And there might even be a few of the old ones that are, that are here in the Burton subdivision, right, that are closer to 3,000. And would easily adapt to the more typical lot sizes of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet that we find in Lewis. So, that would mean we'd be asking somebody to plant four new trees on a 10,000-square-foot lot, which doesn't seem to be, you know, onerous. The suggested minimum size for new trees would be one and a half to two-inch in caliper and five to six feet high, which is the current standard in our subdivision code. A brochure for right tree, right place and planning, watering and care guidelines would also be provided. And one of the things that we've talked a lot about and heard a lot about is, you know, you think it's always great to plant large trees. And unfortunately, it isn't always great to plant large trees because they don't have a great success rate. They, they die at a higher, higher level than small trees. So, all of these, you know, things together, we feel would work towards helping our canopy. And last, we would like to see, create construction requirements to protect and preserve trees that are on or near excavation and/or construction. For example, if there is a new development and there, or a development where a house is being excavated and the lot is being cleared next door to your property even, if you have a large tree that has roots that go over into that area and your drip line extends and a construction trailer or a dumpster is placed on that, that could cause the premature death of that tree. And so, what we're, what we're suggesting here, you know, and also the other obvious scenario is construct, new construction, where they've designated trees that are going to stay and this is going to be part of the forest. But if you're building right up to that and you're not protecting beyond the drip line and the root systems, in 10 years, the trees could, could die and within 10 years. And we're not going to go down, go back down in 10 years and say, "Well, we'd like to fine you for the, and penalize you for the dead tree that was caused by these practices 10 years ago." That's a ridiculous, you know, that's just ridiculous. And we did see tree ordinances that took that approach. So, instead, what we're suggesting is that trees and construction stones, you know, sustained damage, all right, so I really covered this. But we propose creating guidelines to protect the mature trees that are left on construction sites either acquired by owner choice. These trees should be protected through the use of best practices, which are erecting construction fencing that exceeds two to three feet beyond the tree's drip line and prohibiting heavy equipment, storage, parking of dumpsters, or excavation machinery on a tree's root system. So, let's protect the trees up front so we don't have to create a ridiculous ordinance that goes back and looks at why trees died, you know, a year or 10 years from now. So, that's what we're going to be presenting to the mayor and city, and members of city council again next week.
This is the short version, right?
Yeah, that was the short version. That wasn't the short version. That was pretty much it.
You got the preview.
Yeah. I would like to suggest people drive down New Road and see the front of Lewis Waterfront Reserve. They started planting their tree buffers. And this is land that's previously cornfield, has never had trees before. So, it's interesting to see the mix of trees going in there on a berm. So, it's new trees, more green space, and work.
And I think it's important to point out, and I'm sure mayor and city council will appreciate this, that when we come more frequently to you and earlier to you, the ideas may not have been fully explored or the legal side of things. I mean, the idea is that there be more discourse as, as things are being developed, so.
Yeah, so the plan is, this will go, you know, be presented, this will be distributed by, or may have already been to mayor and city council. And I'm happy to distribute it to everyone here as well. And that we will be, you know, seeking feedback on what your thoughts are on this and what direction we should take.
I'm sure all the commissioners would appreciate getting a copy.
Yeah, I'll be happy to send this out.
Are there any comments, questions, or discussions for Deborah? Jackie? Oh, sorry, Rich, I see your hand up and I missed it. Let's, I'll go to Jackie and then you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend Deborah and the committee for all the work that's been done. It's obviously very thorough, extensive. I think it sounds like they've done just a tremendous amount, a big, heavy lift. And I wanted them to know just on the record how much I appreciated that. It, it may be beneficial for me. I like things in small chunks. We might need to break it down as it moves through the process, but job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And honestly, didn't realize, kind of, well, I realized that there was a lot of work being done. As I said, there was a lot of homework assigned in this committee. But I didn't realize, until I really sat down to type this all up in an orderly fashion, how really cohesive it was and it made a lot of sense. So, thank you, Jackie.
Rich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just do want to say, first of all, I really do appreciate having Tim and Andrew here, you know, from the city council and listening to this stuff firsthand and sitting through so much of this. And, and again, I want to echo what Jackie said. Deborah has brought a lot of enthusiasm to this. I've been on this committee. I have not done the work that I hoped that I could bring to it, but I hope I've helped a little bit.
You still will have time, Rich.
But, but just as, as an overarching theme, what I, what I hope and feel that, that we brought to this is, we do have a very good ordinance, as Deborah mentioned, for the trees that are on our public land. And, and we've had that for some time, and I think that is why we are, you know, already a tree city, USA. You know, we already, we've had that designation. And this is designed to help us keep and truly earn that. But again, as an overarching theme, this is just, and I'll just attribute this to me for the most part, but I think it is for the, the theme of the, of the committee, is that we are trying to provide incentives to, to landowners, to property owners on their private land to do what is right to, to maintain the beauty of, of trees on their land. And I think it was Bob and others who have pointed out that this is also in their interest. This, this improves the value of their property as well, you know, to go and look at, you know, someone's land and see beautiful, well-maintained trees there. It also improves the beauty of our community. And so, there, this is win-win situation stuff. But I, I really do believe that the, the carrot works much, much better here than the stick. And we really don't have that much of a stick anyway because we're talking about private land. What people do on their private property, you know, is, is, you know, and Glenn will tell us and remind us, you know, this is private property. So, we really are in an education mode and incentive-based mode. We have a, you know, we're very fortunate to have Marty, who is a, you know, is a real expert on this, and how we can provide resources to these, to, to people for, to give them incentives to maintain these, these beautiful trees that already exist and to put more trees that are the right trees for these new zones. And let me tell you, that's the other thing that we know and that we're learning, is there are new zones. There are new zones as a result of climate change that are, that we are seeing across the United States. And trees that may have been the right tree 30, 40 years ago are now maybe no longer the right tree, especially that are not going to be the right tree 30, 40 years hence from now. So, we need to get smart about that, make sure we're planting the right trees for the future for our community. It's important stuff. Anyway, I'll stop there and amend the work of our chair, Deborah.
Thank, thank you. And I, I want to thank Deborah and the whole, the whole committee because I think you've really followed a great process in terms of really spreading your, your, opening the aperture really wide to look at what other jurisdictions are doing and really collecting that kind of information, which I think is useful moving forward. And I'm sure that mayor and city council will have many questions. I don't know whether there are any comments you want to make this evening or wait for the, the full presentation to, to you.
Yeah, I'll take my turn then.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I skipped over one item on the agenda and I wanted to make sure we got through these items in part because I felt that, I don't want to say it was less urgent, Janelle, but, but I think I'll pop back to that and then come to you, Bob, if that's good, okay? And we set aside some time this evening to talk about the staff report. And by staff report, when we receive an application, the, you know, it's usually like two to four, two to four pages that Janelle prepares that looks at the application after it's gone through the process of review by the city. And they are reviewing it against the code. And I think it's a good time for us to pause and, and look at that staff report and basically say, "Are there things we'd like to see in it that aren't there? Is the format the way we, you know, the, the way we would like it, et cetera?" And certainly, one thing that's just come up this evening is, you know, identifying the actual section of the code in terms of, in terms of number. And I think that would be helpful. And I, I know as new members have come on the commission, as we've gotten new commissioners, it makes it easier for folks to look to the actual code. And this is where we all should be looking. So, let me turn it over to Janelle if you'd like to.
I'd be happy to. So, what I just prepared is kind of a staff report of a staff report. So, the memo, the, it's an action item report is how the, the system references it. So, I, I just call it a staff report. It's to provide a narrative of a project because you're getting all of the background of information for commission members. You're getting the plans, the documents that go with it. But this is kind of like a, a high-level summary for helping you get a better grasp if you're missing something. It's also for the public to be used as well because this is something the public will have, you know, so I try to write it in, in the way that the public can help try to, to understand what's going on. So, I kind of break it down into categories, like the general background. This is a major subdivision for this property. It's zoned this. They're looking for, you know, so many lots. And then typically, what you'll see is like the bulk standards. The bulk standards are, what's the lot size? What are the setbacks? And it'll be, typically, there'll be columns and it'll say, "This is what's, what's, the code says and this is what's proposed." So, you can kind of see right there how they're complying with the code. Then I'll kind of give a background on kind of what the entrance is looking like, again, referencing that, that falls under DELL DOT, that, you know, they're proposing a right turn lane. Are there sidewalks there? You know, what's, what's that kind of frontage looking like? So, I kind of go over all those topics. Like the environmental section, it could, it include floodplain, wetlands, open space, landscaping. So, I kind of, kind of try to give you an update. So, if we have a subdivision that has a landscape buffer, I'm letting you know kind of where to find it on the property or the public where to find it on the property so they have an idea of, it's trying to paint the picture of what the project is. And I'm happy to add the code citations. That's not a problem. Not everything will have a code citation. Certain things like stormwater management's going to fall to the conservation district. Some of the engineering items are going to fall to Charlie. But as the new subdivision code comes on, this, this, this report will actually kind of grow a little bit more because the intent is that we'll have some comments from other agencies saying, "Yes, we've met with the conservation district prior to the sub, some middle of the application." So, we'll have like that and we can add that as an attachment. So, that's what, what we're trying, what I try to do when I do a staff report is just kind of, it's a narrative, kind of, you know, telling the story of what the project is and where you can find like the big topic items. And if they ever need a waiver for like streets, I try to put that in there so you know, "Hey, there's a waiver that needs to be acted upon as well." But that's what we're trying to do. If you, if you're looking for additional information, please let me know. If you, you know, I can definitely add the code citations. That's not a problem. I, I'll make sure I add those. But if you, if you don't like the format or if you're missing something, just let me know. I'm happy to add whatever you're looking for.
I think adding the code citations would be so incredibly helpful. It just would make life really easy for us if you know them. If you have to look them up, it's not really, we're, you know, our work is being put back on you. So, but if you know them, that could add a lot of work.
Having one person look them up as opposed to having...
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Or have the commission do it properly.
Yeah, when you're weighing out the manpower there.
And again, in terms of efficiency. And I, I think it's important too because there are times when things like, when lot averaging is coming into play or things like that, where it's easy to end up looking in the code for something like lot size and coming up with a, a whole section of the code that actually doesn't comply.
Right.
Jackie?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I still consider myself the newbie, although I'm, I'm grateful that I'm now no longer in the actual...
That's right. Amy, you've taken over this spot.
And, and I've been replaced. But I don't know because she's clearly, I think, has a stronger background in, in this area than I do, so perhaps I'm going to remain here. I, I thought the report that was submitted in the last meeting for Roosevelt Landing, that summary report was, was helpful. Again, I wasn't involved in the process when it began, but my request would be as soon as an application is, is beginning the process, if, if we could have something along those lines that, that identifies those areas of the code that may be relevant in the requests. I agree, it is, it is not Janelle's work to tell us what to review. That's part of our job. But to guide us into the, the areas of the code that we may want to review as we review a subdivision application, I think, is more than appropriate and, and very helpful, especially for those of us who are still absorbing all sections of the code. That would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, one comment. Janelle, you mentioned about other agencies. So, how, how in the process, so I am the new leader. How in the process?
Could you speak up again, please?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. When, when a project has, whether it's US Army Corps of Engineer for 404, what, in other words, the state or federal agencies that are going to weigh in on a big project, how is that communicated to the planning commission? Either their review, their approval, or that they actually have a voice?
So, if it's a state-maintained road, DELL DOT's always going to review that. But we typically, unless like a transportation operation analysis, a TOA, or a transportation impact study, a TIS, is needed at the beginning, you typically don't see their comments until the end. The Suss Conservation District reviews for stormwater management. We don't typically see their comments until the end. But again, with the new subdivision process, we're trying to go, "Hey, did you meet with them ahead of time?" So, at least there's the acknowledgement that they've met with them. Charlie is the city's engineer and he's also the, his firm is also the engineer for the Board of Public Works. So, so what happens when an application first comes in? I get a copy, Charlie gets a copy, Austin usually gets a copy. We review it, mark it up, send them back a, a report saying, "You need to fix these items." So, that way then, you're not getting something that doesn't comply with code. It's rare, but it does happen that somehow a lot is just too small. So, it's like, okay, we're going to hold that until they get it fixed. So it's like, okay, we're going to hold that until they get it fixed. And then based on this, we'll, we put like the, this overview back together for you guys. So you're getting that general information. But as they go through the process, so like typically for like a site plan, we've got site plans going through, typically a site plan, ELC, the Office of the State Fire Marshal will review it at the end of the project, right before it gets final approval. So what you guys are really doing is granting some type of preliminary approval pending those agency approvals. And because we don't have, we can't control the timeframe of those agencies, we just know that they'll go through those. And I am the gatekeeper. Nobody, the plans do not get stamped, they do not get endorsed. I don't call Charlie until I have all agency approvals verifying that it's compliant with, you know, the conditions that have been adopted by commission and/or mayor and council and that they have all agency approvals.
So, so in the, hopefully it's a rare case that a federal or state agency or body has a comment that you would think, oh, oh, it needs to come back. In other words, I know we live in our own ordinances and we don't control the world, but, but sometimes those agencies make comments that could change a commissioner's view or perspective or counsel. How does that process work in Lewis?
So depending on, on the size of a project, we do have, I think, one that'll actually have to go through the state's plus process. It's a preliminary land use service. It's an agreement with the, the city has with the state planning office that, that certain applications go through that process. So Del Dot, the Department of Transportation's at the table, the shipos office is at the table, the state fire marshal's at the table. All the state agencies are actually represented. Housing's there, Denrec is there. So they can all provide recommendations and our comments, depending on if it's going to fall under their jurisdiction. So they can provide early comments to an application so you can know that ahead of time if it's a larger application. A three lot subdivision, you don't typically, you're not going to see that. I think the city's agreement is, I think, fifty lots. And then there's a square footage for commercial industrial uses that will trigger that requirement. But that's always a good way that you get those comments ahead of time. And we make sure that the application's not even getting here until we get those comments back from, from plus, from that, that review.
Thank you, thank you. That's very clear.
Just a, just a footnote here. Whenever I read a letter to the editor, a rant, somebody talking about uncontrolled development around here, I just choke whenever I read that term, uncontrolled development. I mean, this just, it just doesn't exist. I mean, thank you.
Highly approved development.
Yes. Well
Okay, I, I, sorry, Rich has had his hand up, so I'd like to get Rich in here and then
Sorry.
No, just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment. I, I just want to say that having Janelle prepare these briefs for us is, as our city planner, is entirely appropriate and, and it's, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's her job and I have found them to be very professional and helpful. One tiny little footnote, if, as, as she prepares the sites, if you could also put the page number for the paper copies for those of us that use them. That would be helpful. And, and where, you know, where we do run into highly technical, complex issues, which, you know, occasionally we do, you know, then I think that, you know, utilizing, you know, our, our council could be appropriate, but use that sparingly. Why? Because it's expensive. But I think Janelle does an absolutely professional job with this in, in the first instance. And, and that just seems to me the, to be the, the, the procedure that we should use going forward. So I, I just commend all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think this has been a good discussion and we have some ideas of, of some changes. Bob?
I have two things I'd like to see in here. One is if you've done calculations on lot averaging and those kinds of things, I'd like to see the calculations. Second, the thing I look for in every one of these, and you sort of tease it out after a while, is where's the, the water table? How high is this? And eventually it shows up when you, if you go and get the big drawing and you start looking for it. But, you know
Floodplain?
Floodplain, you know, water table because stormwater doesn't really work if it's draining, you know, if it's two feet above the water table. Those kinds of things. And, you know, eventually I figure it out, but you could make it easier for us to do that. And I always ask for the full-size drawings because you need them. And if you have any calculations on percentage open space and now percentage trees, I'd like to see those too.
Yeah. So
I have, go ahead.
Some of that, some of that information I don't always have, but I do try. And then sometimes it's some, it's something like the, the calculations you're asking for like percentage of wetlands and percentage of woodlands, sometimes I'll ask for them. But since it's not something that's required as part of the preliminary, typically the, it'll end up on the, on the final plan. But those are, those are items I definitely ask for if it's not in the data column. I, I'm always looking at that data column going, okay, what's, what's there? So typically on the first page, that's where I find a lot of information for that. But I can definitely, if, if I've got calculations and I do calculations, I can put that in the staff report. And if I have water table information, I can, I can do my best to get you those.
I'd like to make a suggestion because, you know, one thing I think it's important to point out is when our next application comes in, it will be the first time that we're following a new process and a new code. And I think it's probably a good point for us to perhaps schedule an additional pre-meeting or before we actually dig into reviewing that application where we share and review again as a commission, what is this new process? And go through your report against the, the new code so that we're ensuring that we've all educated the full committee, the commission on this. Because it, it is going to be different. So people who've been on this commission a long time will be following a new process, people who are new are entering a new process, and all of us will be referencing and referring to a newly adopted code. So Charlie?
Don't forget that you've got your preliminary and final plan review guidelines in the code now.
Right.
So it's really helpful. And a lot of the information that you're, you'll be looking for is now required in what we call the applicants' engineers' report. So keep an eye out for that on future.
But I think that would be, give us a good opportunity to, to, to look at the, the report you prepare in the context of the new code and the new process and to do another check on are we getting the information we, we need? Because I, I know there's an interest in providing it, so. Okay, any, anything else on this topic before we?
Yeah, we also have the Joint Development Preliminary Review Commission, whatever the acronym is. Yeah, whatever it is. For the Historic Planning Commission, recently reviewing the Baptist Church expansion too, which is coming up again next month for final review and hopefully forwarding on. That's another piece.
Any other comments? Let's move on then. Bob kindly at our last meeting took on what's, I think, working out to be a, a big task. So, and, and this, this was looking at training opportunities, kind of briefing items, things that we might have when we have a meeting like this, where we can use it as an opportunity to cover a topic that we're interested in and it's of relevance for us in more depth.
So I have a handout and Janelle has one that she can project. But if you just take take two pages.
You might need to refresh Blue. Yes, thank you.
The second, the second page is just a couple of links I found on the city website to the water workshop of two years ago and the presentations from that workshop that people might want to just refresh, refresh themselves about because it was a well-done presentation. It's available. You really don't have to, we don't have to redo that as, as re-education. And then for a couple of days, I was pretty much like a class correspondent from college I graduated from. Nobody wrote to me and I had nothing to say. And at the risk of waking, of starting to make up stuff, then, then I've got a list of items that I thought we could kind of just talk through for a few minutes to say, here's scope. And then give me some direction on what you're interested in. We'll just do that with a show of hands, if that's an efficient way to do it. So these are, are not in an order by Nancy suggested this one or something like that. They're in the order I received them. And number one, strategies for zero waste. What other communities are doing to plan versus a strategic goal? And interested in understanding how we might start with a composting service.
I think our city manager's been pitched on this by, by resident. Our city manager's been pitched on this potential by someone that's running a business here in our fine city.
Okay. Well, maybe
So it's a good, I mean, it's a
That's a good one because then we have somebody to invite.
I'll out him. His name is John Gordon.
Two, continued updates on climate change, sustainable communities, sea level rise implications on zoning. Big topic, and that's frankly the reason I pulled out the water workshop and the planning commission stuff. And I started looking at it again, that some of it's very, very good. And then you have somebody explaining it and you can go to the, their own slides, which are on our, our planning commission website. And it does help everybody if you can find the planning commission website because it's kind of buried in there, but there's good stuff in there. So that's something. Three, a joint city council, LPC, workshop on federal infrastructure bill and how we might jointly position projects and efforts to take advantage and meet comp plan goals. And I don't, I don't really know resources on that, but certainly
One thing I'll say on that is the University of Delaware has a grant assistance program that they've opened up and that's one of the main intentions of that is to, as you said, Bob, and I think that may be a good idea for a workshop. I know that also Carper's liaison, John Kane, has also offered a similar option to us.
Updates and training on floodplain and wetland protection and administration. Maybe a training workshop for develop, with developers on protecting our critical habitats while building or renovating. I imagine we could get some of the developers to come in and talk to us about what would make life easier, better.
Like developing some best practices that are beyond what's required in the code? Is that where, because I also think that could be potentially something that some homeowners would be really interested in.
One thing I'd like to involve too is the Board of Public Works for, I see in my own neighborhood, a lot of transformers, electrical transformers that are basically placed at grade level and they're sitting in the floodplain. I'm just wondering if LP, BPW, we're LPC, is planning on elevating things like electrical transformers to get them out of the way of seawater, not, not very good for electrical work.
Well, I'll find the answer to that and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you right now that we are getting, just to get transformers, it's, we're up to fourteen weeks.
Wow.
Supply chain is killing us.
Try the club.
I'm no expert, but I know there is a climate resistant transformer and I know, I think the BPW implements some of them, but I really don't know all the details about them.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Number six, what is exactly is included in Lewis's environmental protections and what is missing? We may have just started a subcommittee on that subject.
Yeah, I should say, I have a feeling Tom, your, your name is going to be next to this one.
All right.
And is there any, can we kind of add, add in here?
Sure.
Is that the purpose here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think related to that is, it was brought up, it failed, but looking again at floodplain legislation, you know, floodplain regs and, and the excellent recharge area here in the city of Lewis. I believe we had a different mayor and city council when that was brought up a previous time and I, I think it's worth, it's worth discussing again.
Isn't that part of what the environmental committee's doing? I feel like when I first heard that tonight, I felt like you're going to pull a lot of that discussion from those previous subcommittees.
Yeah, I would hope we would be. It's good to underline how important that is.
This is also something that the BPW could get involved. We're doing some serious look at, at sea level rise and floodplains, especially relative to the wastewater treatment plant. So we're, we're already working big time on that issue.
It would be to, to access what, you know, what you're finding or, or the resources you're finding or information you're finding.
Fine, okay.
That would be great.
Well, we can do that. We can probably ask Austin or Tom to summarize that. Number seven was stormwater management, types, methods of calculating, the review process. And the obvious person to invite would be Sussex, is it Jessica Watson? And the only problem with that is she's kind of, well, England had a guy, a civil servant, full-time, watching on the cliffs of Dover for Napoleon. And they got rid of him twenty, thirty years ago. And I think, I believe she's a very competent engineer and, and administrator, but she's got the same job. She's watching and looking in the wrong direction with low standards. So I'd be all for inviting her, but looking for what's beyond that.
Well, it might be an opportunity to bring some of those issues up.
Well, I, I mean, when I've heard her speak, my apologies to Jessica. She's clear about what she's supposed to do, her job, but she can't go beyond that. So do we have to or whatever?
So are you suggesting that maybe we have some speakers, some, you know, presentation from someone who is presentation from someone who is expert in forward-thinking processes for stormwater management?
Or even a panel?
I think we need to start with what currently we have to understand, to go beyond it, you know? And I think, I think we could all use some basics.
Invite her and then tar and feather her, or anything.
No, no, no.
And also, we, BPW needs to be involved because stormwater management, there are programs ongoing now to treat stormwater. And you can't even imagine how much that's going to cost.
Well, we're seeing it. We're seeing it on the news in a bad way.
So whatever, oh. Whatever you're dealing with stormwater, it really should be a community effort. I mean, a community of BPW, the city, and you and everybody else. It's a, it's a big, it's a big time topic.
We also could look with the senator and congresswoman's office. The infrastructure bill allows, just as the mayor was saying, senators are going to be able to have pet projects, actually. That's a nicer way to say that, probably, in this bill. Because they're trying to move out the funding as quickly as possible. So we could look at the funding that's available for community capacity building. So the developer workshop with the planning commission, with the community, could have a panel of innovative new ideas. What's coming around the corner on the topics we're interested in? And so there could be some funding to, you know, a lot of those speakers will just come at no cost. But I think we could also, when those offices are contacted, we should be looking at education as part of the infrastructure bill as well. And a lot of these things could be, you know, I see this as kind of a a series of all of us being educated at the same time. So it's council, it almost could be council and planning commission jointly present to the community and the public, you know, three workshops every year, or whatever it is. And so we just all basically raise our knowledge. And all of these fields, I learned to have, I mean, I would think it's, it's the engineers who are going to, they're dealing with these issues. They want to solve these problems. And so there'll be other engineers who will present ideas for all of us and that I think is warranted. So there's a combination, I think, in all of the training that you're proposing. That it could be a common thread, how we could pull some things together.
So going on, inviting the building inspector to talk about changes in the new building code. You know?
He did have a plan to do that.
Yes. So he'll be going out, again, he'll be giving an update to mayor and council. And then he'll also be going out to the contractors. But we can definitely make sure he comes here. He's still working on those changes. So when we get closer, we can definitely have him, we can add him to the, to an agenda.
But at some point, if he came and gave us a half an hour of, these are things that are in there, and then we, they will know.
Yeah, absolutely. He's, he's still working on what those changes are. So yeah, when we get farther along, we'll definitely have him come.
Inviting someone who knows about affordable housing. And there's actually a lot of talk and discussion in Delaware about how to do it. Really a question of, is it possible in Lewis?
So Bob, we've had this conversation a little bit out and off on affordable housing, correct, in the past?
Yeah, I was just thinking that we could invite someone to make a presentation to us rather than, and Tom, I'll, I'll send you an article, a paper I, I found recently about what is affordable and so on. And, and, you know, it was at least good for me. And it says, this is our definition of an affordable, and it's so many times the poverty level, and so-and-so can afford this much. And, and then it even had a map of Delaware, and it said, we might be able to do affordable housing here and in this strip over here. I'm happy to send it to you, Nancy, and we can forward it out to members. But to learn more about it so that we have an informed discussion rather than... And I know Joe is going to a training program on it.
Next week.
Next week, so...
October 26th, from 8:00 AM to noon.
So maybe he has some things, I'll hold my, my paper. Joe and I'll talk and we'll send something out after that.
Thank you.
Maybe having somebody, Levin, come and talk about light pollution and dark sky, and lighting, and changes in that.
I think this is important. This is something we, we did try to address more in the subdivision code, but it's not addressed in our present zoning codes. And again, this is something that we, we need to coordinate badly with, with BPW, I would think, or am I wrong about this?
I don't know.
I'm wrong, Tom. I'm thinking that BPW is responsible for the incredibly...
We just changed the poles.
I was about to complain about the bright whirr on Councilman Ritzert's front lawn that shines across into my window, but... Sometimes I think the full moon is rising.
I think, I think maybe we could find somebody who would be knowledgeable, come and explain, these are the parameters, and, you know, some places you turn them off because, and there's dimensions of how much actually radiates up to contribute to the sky.
Yeah, I shouldn't be joking about this. We, we did explore this.
Yeah, and that's something in the subdivision code we spent a lot of time on. And I know Charlie, you provided some good materials. I can't remember the name of the association, but...
There's a dark sky. There's a dark sky coalition.
I think Tom did that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. But we have it saved. We have that.
Yeah, I think, I'm sure we could identify someone who could use those materials and also speak to us on this, because...
Yeah, long ago, didn't you?
Absolutely. And just the directionality. And I think that needs to go beyond the subdivision code because it's the, a lot of it, it's the lumens and the directionality.
Yeah, somebody who could explain the measurements to us and how you, how you write a standard about things.
It's an easy fix, too. It's not something that is so hard.
I think we do balances of, you know, what's safe. Sometimes you say you put lights there because of safety. So where do you balance the two things? Or do we commit to, I think a lot of places nowadays have motion censored lights, lighting, and where is that appropriate?
That was actually the, the safety components. We did address all of this and discuss it at length. So we just need to access those materials that...
Whether the light, if all the lights went up as opposed to where you really, I mean, no one's flying to their car, they're walking to their car.
Yeah, the directionality is huge.
There's also, in the town where I was vice mayor, we put in all dark sky compliant lights when we renovated. And so they're Bluetooth operated now. So you can say, oh, in this municipal parking area, we need them brighter. But on the street lowers, there's so much mobility to be able to address those. But there is a dark sky coalition. They're nerdy, nice people that come and give you more detail than you ever want. But, but they would come because they're looking to communities to try to adopt some of this.
Talk to Amy.
Yeah, I'll work on getting in contact with her. Absolutely.
I don't know where this one came from, but it was setting a criterion for analyzing open space opportunities that go beyond existing open space. I do remember what that was. Should, Marion City Council had a, an opportunity a couple months ago to buy some land. They were somewhat awash in the opportunity. It came up quickly, but they really had no criteria to measure it against. You know, and we have open space written all over our comprehensive plan. So should we have, should we provide a framework for that? And how would we learn about it? That's, that's what that was.
And do you mean financial criteria as well, or...
I think that's part of what, I think...
I only know what's in the sentence.
I was talking to Ms. Councilperson Jones recently is that she does plan to address that in her finance committee is talk about what potential funding that we might consider for this initiative.
But, you know, would open space be more valuable if it preserves wildlife habitat versus some recreational activity or...
San views?
You know? And then permeable pavements. And I guess from what I've learned of permeable pavements, I've sort of... Well, I guess I'd be suggesting that we invite somebody to talk about that. But I've sort of learned that permeable pavements have to be maintained at a fairly high level. And it, parenthetically, it sort of makes me think that if permeable is on a private property, we can't really count it as permeable.
I think that's something, though, honestly, that there are a lot of residents in Lewis who might be interested in this topic. Because we have so many people who want to make improvements on their house in an environmentally conscientious way. I'd like to get rid of my gigantic concrete driveway. If we held a workshop on this, I think people would be very interested.
Well, I think we ought to maybe invite somebody to come talk to us about it, and then where do we go from there? And then another topic that comes up all the time is accessory buildings. There are some existing. Should, most are not permitted or are in violation. What sort of steps should be taken in zoning? I mean, is this another way to do affordable housing or elder care? Or is it, is it not? And so that's, that's my list, or the list that I've gotten together from a number of suggestions. And I guess I'd like to pick a top, you know, just a show of hands to say, yeah, this is definitely one. Please don't vote for everything. But if we came out with four or five that were, should be worked on in the near term, you know, I, I think that'd be helpful.
Might I suggest that we eliminate number nine, only because Nancy just addressed it and requested that that occur with the subdivision review process? So one less to worry about?
And I would think we could eliminate number six because we just formed a subcommittee on it.
Which maybe number four could go into that subcommittee?
Right.
I think four and six could, yeah, maybe even two.
You can skip number two.
Yeah, two, four, and six.
And potentially even 14, because that could be an environmental issue as well.
Right.
I like number 14.
I do, too. But I'm thinking that could be something that subcommittee looks at as an environmental item. But a best management practice.
I think we're all interested in learning about permeable.
Yeah, I think many, I'd like to see that scheduled as something and really put it out in advance with the media.
I'm sure, I'm sure Tom Jensen won't take offense if we have some kind of presentation on permeable materials.
And actually, number 12 could really go to environmental as well.
That's true.
Okay, because you're looking at the different elements. So if we don't get 14, we could at least get 11.
Currently in the regs, so...
Yeah, I think it, I'm with Melanie.
I don't think, I don't think it should go into environmental.
It's more covered right now in the subdivision code than the environmental regs right now.
But is there a limitation on the subcommittee to only stay in the confines of the environmental regs? Or can they look at environmental issues that are identified or addressed in the subdivision code?
I thought the, I thought that the direction was to examine the existing code.
I think given that we've just made changes because of light pollution, probably we'd rather they focus more on things that haven't been updated recently.
So is that it or out?
I would vote for N.
So can I just make sure we're in agreement on what's going to environmental? We have two, four, and six. Was there anything else that was going to environmental? I would think seven, possibly.
Well, except I think it's a really good topic for us to better understand.
Okay. So two, four, and six.
And nine?
And then nine, we're crossing out because we're doing it in a different, we're, we're doing it with the first application that comes forward.
Okay. And remember, you can't, you can't vote for all of them.
So there are 11 remaining. So do you want people to limit their votes to their top five or six?
Well, I don't know. If you're enthusiastic, I think is, or, or curious. But, you know, if you're unenthusiastic, vote, don't vote.
Abstain.
So I'm just trying to get a feeling for what would be, A, interesting and informative, and help us move, move along. So how about number one?
I'm enthusiastic about number one. I'm enthusiastic about number one.
Do you want people to raise their, their hands?
Yeah, let's raise our hands.
So for, Tom?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. For those of us who don't have the piece of paper in front of us, it's very difficult to track what number one was.
Okay. We're just about to pull it up here.
Yeah, I can't, on our screen, it's about the size of my laptop.
Okay, let's, let's read out just the title, the heading of each one.
It was...
Can I, can I propose something? Perhaps we send Bob our preferences, rather than sitting here and collecting them?
That'd be fine.
As long as you do it individually.
Yes.
So, thinking for you. We can't have a conversation, so...
I can send everybody a revised and shortened list. And you can send it back, and I'll tabulate them, and we'll go from there.
But I have to say, the one reason to do it now is that means everyone, all of the commissioners, will send this to Bob within a limited timeframe.
I tend to vote towards, I tend to lean towards kicking it out, but just...
Well, and Rich did have to leave, so Rich is no longer on the call.
Okay. We can ask Rich to give his...
Absolutely.
And Bob, maybe, maybe we could look at it, not replying at all, at two, what are the things that you're recommending would come and individuals like the building inspector would come for a 15, 20-minute update for us? And what are the things that we actually want to delve into that might be, where to learning about them? And then their candidates for a community workshop or a joint workshop with the town council? Because I think we have like, we want to get smart, and then we want to figure out how we keep our community very engaged.
I would think we want to have our shorter kind of presentation discussion to almost vet things that would be, would go together for a larger workshop or community-based thing. Okay. It is now 8:38, and I want us to be out of here before 9:00 PM. So my preference would be just to see a show of hands on these and to get this done, so Bob can leave with it. I know, I know you, I know you're disagree. It should take us very limited time. Do you want to read off each one, Bob?
Number one, strategies for zero waste. What are other companies, communities doing to plan for this strategic goal? What are other companies, communities doing to plan for this strategic goal? And interested in understanding how we might have a composting service.
Can people raise their hand if this is in their top group? Okay, one vote, two votes. Three votes, three votes.
Again, I add that because I don't have the list in front of me, and what I see in front of me is very hard to read, but I'm not against zero waste, I just can't see what the list says.
Well, actually, I think that's a point I had not appreciated, Jackie, and that is that you can't see the whole list, and to, to select your top ones, it may be hard going through it in order.
I don't mean to be difficult, I apologize.
No, no, I think it's, and I, I think we're split here on this, so I'm happy, just, we'll send it out, and people will send in their, their top choices to Bob.
Is that what you want to do? Okay.
I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, no, I, I just think it makes, it puts those on Zoom at a real disadvantage, greater than I appreciate it, so. Okay, so thank you, Bob, and thank you to everyone who sent ideas in to Bob, because I think we're, we're, you know, getting a good list together here. Okay, we're on to finish off with our final reports, and let's go next to our city solicitor.
So there are a number of things that were on City Council's agenda Monday. Are you going to touch on those?
Yep.
And I don't have anything, but I'm here.
Maybe we should go to Janelle, I'm here.
So October is community planning month. There was a, so there was a proclamation read by mayor and council, but signed by the mayor, recognizing the efforts that the commission does and all the community planners do, so recognizing all the efforts and the time you guys put into all the planning. So enjoy, October is community planning month. I recall.
Is there any swag?
I wish.
Drinks? No, anything? I don't know.
Get it or something? We do sticker.
There was a request to reconsider the landscape waiver buffer for 12 Jefferson, for 12 Jefferson Court. Council did uphold the denial of that, that you guys had, had made in the past. Their First Baptist Church of Lewis is going through the joint site development ad hoc review committee process, so they'll be going, they'll be moving forward with that site plan for a new church within the city and the parking lots, actually in the county, because they've, they're in both the city and the county. Mayor and council adopted, approved the waivers for Roosevelt Landing that you had recommended, approved for. The annexation text amendments will be on the October 27th mayor workshop agenda, so they can see the full ordinance before they schedule a public hearing. The comprehensive plan went to the state plus process. We've got some really good feedback, people really liked that, and mayor and council held a public hearing, so that's anticipated to be on their agenda for November to finally, hopefully finalize that. And they adopted an ordinance regarding ground cover in the right-of-way. It may not really impact you, but for a planning and building department, it was what's allowed in the right-of-way. So it was determined that vegetation and trees is allowed, and impervious material only for access purposes, so for like your driveway access and for like the sidewalk to the house would be permitted. But you can still ask for licenses if you want to put something else into it. So it was a very busy month from mayor and council for planning items. That's all I've got.
Our busy month last month created their busy month. So this is, this is the way it goes. Any reports from mayor or?
We have a workshop of 20, we have a workshop of the 27th, so as Janelle already mentioned, we'll have the, I think Melanie's meant to present the X rez, X mix update, and then then also mention that the tree ordinance is meant to be updated there. Planning commission specific, I don't think there's anything else on that workshop in particular.
I just want to say how nice I think we all think it is to have Mayor Williams and Councilman Ritzer both attending this meeting, so thank you.
I second that.
Over to Mr. Owen from BPW, anything to report?
Well, basically, we have a big budget coming up. Well, we're in the middle of it. We have a five-year budget and around $43 million, and now we're trying to find out where we're going to pay for it, so. It's an old city, and what they said at a seminar I went to once was, I wish I could remember the mathematics of it, but basically 80-plus percent of our, our capital is underground.
Wow.
So all the buildings and whatever you see in our financial statement, in terms of what, what we own in all the buildings and all the rest of it, is such a pathetic small amount compared to what we have to be responsible for.
So there's a lot of money buried in Lewis.
A lot of buried money. Yep.
Just don't go digging for it, please.
Thank you. We had the minutes, and are there any changes, additions, edits to the minutes?
I have a question on page eight, the top of page eight, about the action made. We had, the motion passed with six yes votes and one zero vote. I don't understand how you can get a zero vote and one abstention. It's usually yes or no's, but it says one zero vote.
Probably a no.
It might have been the abstention.
No, one abstention.
There isn't abstention, but there's one zero.
Person missing?
Must be zero news.
Top of page eight, under the, under the action item by Bob Hefferman.
We can ask Jackie to go back and double check.
Yes, I, I did double check it. I did double check that, and that's how Chairwoman Stacy had worded it. I think someone left the meeting. Was it Mr. Ennis had left? And that's why I think you had said it was a, you counted him as a zero.
I, I, I don't recall.
I'll go back and watch that.
I sure don't recall counting him as a, as a zero.
Never leave the meeting.
I'm not disputing what you're saying, Jackie, but maybe there was something in the reception. I'm just looking at the number of people.
Will we adjourn it? I want to count the number of people we had, to make sure we're accounting for the right number of votes. So we had eight. So if we had six yes and one abstention, that makes seven.
But as you said, someone might have left.
If, if he had left the meeting, it's not a vote, it's not a zero.
Correct, it's not a vote, so it just goes.
Maybe, maybe it's just a no.
So it would have been approved six to zero with one.
Yeah, I think six.
Six to one.
Yeah.
Well, no, it'd be.
It's six to zero with one abstention.
With one abstention. I think maybe that's what had been said, approved six to zero with one abstention.
That makes no sense to me. I'm going with that.
Yeah, it's not that someone voted zero.
Because it changes nothing.
I, we'd, we'd like it to be changed to read, the motion passed with six, with six yes votes, zero no, and one abstention by Ms. Metta.
Okay.
Okay.
That was a.
Good catch, JoJo.
Just curious.
We all read it and didn't.
Okay.
Any other, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
With one abstention, it's passed.
I'm sorry, you abstained? I didn't hear.
Amy Morosco, I was not in attendance.
Oh, okay.
So it's six approved with one abstention.
No zeros.
Right. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Sorry?
Jackie had a. My apologies, the disadvantage of, of participating virtually, I miscounted who was in the room. My apologies, ignore me, sorry.
Okay. We, we will not accept you as a zero vote, Jackie. We, we, I'm not calling anyone a zero at all here, okay?
Well, I would like to make a motion to end this meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.